I would like to call the, uh, to order the Shakopee School Board Business Meeting for Monday, October 9th, 2017. Sarah, please say no.
Bowerman?
Yes, ma'am.
Alec?
Here.
Pass?
Yep.
And Ian?
Here.
Romanski?
Kim.
Tucker?
Here.
And Swanson?
Good evening. Uh, we will move on to item two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three. We are Shakopee Schools, good news items. We will got one great news item, and I would like to call up, please, Jim McCausage, Principal of Junior High East. Welcome, Jim.
Welcome.
All right. Starting on January 1st, 2018, Jim McCausage, our principal at East Junior High, will begin serving on the Professional Standards and Licensing Board that oversees teacher licensure in the state of Minnesota. McCausage is one of 11 people appointed by Governor Mark Dayton to serve on the board. The entirety of this chart of establishing requirements for teacher preparation programs and licensure. 2017-18 school year marks Mr. McCausage's fifth year as principal at Junior High East, and he has more than two decades of experience, education experience, that has earned his belt as a teacher and as a principal. So, on behalf of your very humble history, congratulations on that appointment.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to add?
It'll be exciting times. Um, we've got a lot of work to do. The state passed the new tiered licensure plan last year, and that'll be a big part of what we're working on in the next six to eight months, is trying to get that fully implemented. So, uh, we'll, we'll see how it goes. It's a lot of work, but exciting.
How can we, as a board, help support?
Uh, you know, I think you're doing that already. I appreciate being here this evening, and, uh, we just look forward to, uh, to coming back and sharing some of the thoughts from the state and, uh, you know, make sure that it works well here in Shakopee as we move towards an academy model with some of the unique licenses, et cetera, that we're going to need in the district.
So, you request me to present every week?
Yeah.
At every board meeting?
Just I know Jim is the only principal in Minnesota on the board, so it is quite a prestigious honor.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jim.
Congratulations.
All right, we will move on to item four, consideration of the agenda as presented with additions, and I do believe we have one addition, one addition.
Yep, we'd like to add an old business discussion item for construction update.
We'll add Old Business Item 6.2.
Uh, five dot two, please.
Five dot two?
Yes, please.
That's consent.
Oh, I apologize.
No, it's six dot two.
Oh, I just realized that. Yep, six dot two. It looks like we should renumber our consent items after five-one. We jump to four-one-one, reitem those to five-one-one and forward.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other changes or additions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Come on.
Mary?
Second.
Uh, Reg, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same sign. Motion carries. Move on to item five, consent items. Uh, I would like to entertain a motion to approve consent. So, move that.
Second.
Second, Tony, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. That motion carries. Now, we'll jump to six, Old Business Discussion Items, and Dave Borowski, come on up and give us an update on our attendance area planning.
Okay. This table, I'm a little confused by this new arrangement here.
We're not sure either. We're not sure why that's the...
I'll, I'll take this one. Okay, this is kind of to keep it on the radar and also to share some of the, just keeping the thinking going forward on a couple things that we've discussed, and a little bit of new information as well. So, we talked about this last time, and the board said, yes, this is what we want to do. We want to allow intra-district transfers as much as possible. And we've been using this term "batching" kind of, and so we put some dates to that, to kind of think about what that could look like. And so, what we talked about is the forms would be available starting March 1st, and our first kind of cutoff would be April 1st, and we would approve as many of those at that time as, as we could. As we actually talked in detail about what that process could look like, and I think maybe it happened here, it was in a different setting, where, uh, we were asked the question that, well, what if, maybe it was our principals' meeting too, what if some of them fit and some of them didn't? Because we've kind of talked about it as this batch of requests. So, what we talked about we would be doing is also timestamping them. So, if somebody dropped them off or we got it in the mail, when we got them, we would stamp them. And so, if we got into the situation where some of them worked, and we got to a point partway through that batch, and the rest didn't, that we would have some criteria for at least deciding how we, where we stopped. Okay? Wanted to emphasize that the busing is not provided in this situation, and, uh, those were our, our first staff updates.
And the reason we said April 1st was for staffing purposes, uh, so that we have an idea of where our staff would be. Um, in talking to other districts, that on the year of significant boundary changes, they said most of their intra-district transfer requests came in the first week that they were available. So, those parents that were concerned about it got those in right away. So, that'll give us an idea of numbers right away.
Well, that's what I thought this process, is it incentivizes or incents people to do it quickly, because that'll help their odds of getting approved.
Okay, good. This is still aligned with what the board was thinking. Uh, second topic that's out there, we've discussed a number of times, is this group of seventh graders that might have, that would have five schools in five years under these plans. It's that small group of kids that are in seventh grade right now, that could wind up switching from east to west or west to east, depending on which scenario ultimately gets selected. And I, we built this out a little bit, so we talked about maybe for one year, trying to do something to mitigate that issue for this group of kids. So, I wanted to get more clarity around what that looked like, so I'm going to show that to you as well.
Dave, just for clarity, five schools in five years, but some of those changes were not boundary-related. They were going from a grade to a grade that's in a different building.
So, three of the least.
Yeah. And the current, right, the way we are right now, you'd be three schools in five years regardless. I would just state exactly the way they are. So, you're correct. The, it just adds the, uh, two additional because of the change in attendance areas from east to west potentially, and the grade configuration change from the high school being 10-12 to the high school being 9-12. So, they move a year earlier. So, it added the one and then compressed the timeframe. So, it created that situation. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, here's what it would look like under each of the scenarios. Okay? Under 1A, I'm, I'm gonna just get up and, this group right here is part of Sun Path, and in 1A, Sun Path changes from feeding to, um, west instead of east. Okay? That would impact 91 kids. So, I'm just, want to teach you how to read that. Okay? Forty-five kids here, this, these kids would change from west to east because Jackson would change to Pearson. Pearson change feeds east, Jackson feeds west. So, you can see each of these kind of lays out what the impact would be. So, in this case, if we, when I kind of hand drew these, you'll see these add up to 220. That's this 222. Okay? So, that's, I said a small number. That's actually a significant number of seventh graders if that went in. Here's what this same thing looks like for 2A. So, I'm gonna just point this out again and all this work. This is, in 2A, this area changes from Jackson to Pearson. Pearson feeds east, Jackson changes west or goes to west. So, these kids would, these 45 kids here, and then these 18 kids, because this changes to Red Oak from Eagle Creek. Eagle Creek goes to west, Red Oak goes to east. Okay? So, and then there's one more, 2B. Okay. Exact same situation, just that one block changed a little bit. The thinking was, well, under consideration was, would we send a bus in there for one year to mitigate it for those, that group of seventh graders in the areas impacted for that, not saying that very well. The seventh graders that would wind up in these five schools in five years, would we want to do something like this to mute that impact a little bit for them?
And so, we wanted to show you this because this could be part of the recommendation in November and part of your conversation in November.
Okay. Any questions on that piece?
We don't have any idea at this point, since it's so early, about the interest that the parents have in going where the change is or dropping their company.
Yeah, I can say this was driven by feedback that we received from, from the community. They said, oh, how, look at this group. They're being moved five times. And, uh, so, that was the feedback that we received from the community. We're just sharing it out.
Dave, I guess the two questions I would have, and maybe not for tonight, but for future, would be, number one, what does that do if we were to flip-flop these groups back to west so that they would stay, you know, only at four schools in five years? What would that do to the enrollment numbers and the demographics at, at west? Then, the other thing would be, what would that cost of having a bus? I mean, 40, is that 40 kids in that one block?
Yeah.
That's a pretty tight block, too. So, it's, if, that's half a bus, right? Or more than half a bus, 40 kids. So, it's probably, you know, I, I'd just like to see the hard cost of that, I guess, is my question.
Yeah.
Yes. We'll work, we'll work through that. Okay? If you want us to get, well, you're asking us for that, so we'll get that. Yeah.
Thank you.
How many students are we talking about?
Depends on which scenario. This scenario right now would be 58 kids. 2A is 63 kids, and 1A is about 220 kids. All right. Then, just a couple other items that are still on the radar. Okay? Just want to keep them out there. We had talked about, and I just want, this area right here, which is Pearson, that those, even though Pearson feeds east, and we, and it's a lot of detail, so I apologize if this is redundant for you guys, but this fed, these kids should actually be feeding into east, but we looked initially at keeping the walkers the same as they are right now. Right now, this area walks to west. We have determined that we will, we're gonna need to redraw all three of these and make it a true feeder pattern, that all of Pearson goes to east regardless of where they, they live. Okay?
But it's still giving parents options.
Yeah. Yep. So, that will happen. Uh, we talked about this being, this iterative process as well, and what, uh, if you, look, just wanted to talk a little bit about this construction that's taking place in front of Jackson Elementary right now, which is going to be a childcare center. Um, this week, I think Doug Schleif met with somebody who's working on that project, and was told, uh, that the capacity of that center is going to be about 250, including staff and students. And we started doing some rough estimates. So, even if he said 50 of those are staff, that still leaves 200 students. We don't have anything right now that would help us determine of that 200, how many would be school-aged, and of those school-aged, how many would be kids that wouldn't be at Jackson in their attendance area. So, Doug is reaching out to the, the Ladybug Center, where's the center in Chaska, I think, and a center in Laconia, to try to get a little more information of that, because that could have an impact. And so, as we think about where the open seats are, understanding, that could, I'm making this up right now, but could potentially have more of an impact than a development could, because that's kids. We know those kids are going to be there. And if the plan is for them to walk to Jackson because it's literally right across the parking lot, then that does have an impact, and we need to be aware of that. Okay?
Is, is there also another childcare center going in downtown? Yes.
Some Montessori school, isn't it?
Yes.
Oh, right on the main track.
Right on the main track there. Would that have any impact?
I don't know.
Not as close.
It's a school. And sometimes Montessori's will offer kindergarten programming too, so that's something we'll really be checking into.
And then, just again, we know this, and we haven't even put it on our maps, but the, the childcare center in that downtown development now going off the books, both are things that have kind of changed while we're in this process, and so we have to just keep our eyes open to what's going on out there. And then, there was a question last time about asking if any of the, the three scenarios that we're working with right now have any significant cost differences between the three. And I did talk to Palmer Bus recently. It said no. And Pat was on that. Pat Huber would do some of that work. She was on the task force, and she had no objection at that time to any of them as being, there being real cost differences between them, and she said the same thing again when I confirmed. Okay?
Can I make a different point?
Yes.
Because actually, I'm not even sure that it is a point. I happen to be around 18 and 42 a week ago, 10 days ago. And of course, that's where one of the developments is going. And I noticed that it could be my misunderstanding. It appears to be two. There's the one right on the corner, because it has two different names. It appeared to have two different names, and I want to make sure that in our calculations, we've recognized that there's actually two different developments. One is like a mixed development that may have a bunch of townhomes and apartments. The other appear to be more single-family dwellings. Did we have that understanding of that development? And I may be wrong, but it just, as I drove by, I went, I don't remember that name, and that's different than the name what's on the corner.
Well, it could be, it could be a separate situation where I would say that's all one development, but there's...
That's all we want to confirm.
Yeah, but the neighborhoods are differently named.
Which one are you, you talking about?
The bottom, maybe your bottom.
Middle.
Well, 18 and 42, so find out. It's the...
No.
The prior location, Villanueva, right?
Villanueva prior location.
Yeah.
That one, it, it is a mixed dwelling.
Right.
But I don't know if it's two different ones.
That's what I'm trying to, just, I'm just throwing it out there. If somebody, somebody made me out of jokes, check.
Double check.
Yeah, it was a good idea.
And it may very well be captured there. It just struck me as two developments, not one.
Okay, so, the takeaways would be, we want to double-check that. We want to check on the Montessori school downtown and get the pricing on what bringing buses in, uh, work with that group of seventh graders would be.
So, would Ladybug, just out of curiosity, do you have any idea if they might be willing to use our software, or would you work with them with our software to try to plug in where their students might be, or do you think they would even have a clue where they're going to actually come from?
I don't know.
Hard to say. You know, it's, most daycares will bus to whichever school the kids', parents want them at, you know, if it's their neighborhood school. But this one being right next to a school, it's going to be unique. So, we're going to have to play it out. It's going to be really hard to predict what the numbers are going to be.
I wonder if that's what they're thinking.
Yeah, exactly.
So, again, Doug and I had this conversation, I think on Thursday or Friday, and he was reaching out to get more information.
Yeah, but that, that'll be part of our November conversation, too, is, okay, what do we have for room at particular buildings? And so, that's why I also want to make the statement that we've received far more feedback from the community on plans 2A and 2B than we have on plan 1A. And I'm not saying to, any recommendations with that. I'm just stating that as a point of view.
All right, all right. Anything else for Dave? Thanks, Dave. All right, Mr. Zimer, if you want to come up, we'll move on to 6.2. Are you going to add? We're gonna get a quick, um, construction budget update. Let's just, uh...
Old Business Discussion.
Old Business Discussion. I'll see, read that.
We got a quick slideshow.
We, we sent a little shot. If you printed that earlier, it's a...
Yeah. I got it out there. Okay.
So, you do have slideshow. Okay, you want to start with that?
I'm checking.
Go. You're right there.
I'm checking.
Alright, slideshow showing our typical format that we've been showing. Uh, again, this is a view of your new, uh, area T, the classroom wing and the foreground that's open right now, I mean, used. And in the background there is the addition onto the south wing, which is topped out in steel. Roofing is tentatively starting at the end of this week, uh, but they are roughing in on lower levels and working their way up, so, well on schedule there. Uh, just a view of the, the west entry. That's some minor things, metal panel finishing up there. Uh, signage is supposed to be coming in the next couple weeks for the, the red sign there. Uh, and that should be wrapping up. Some of landscaping will be tidied up too here in the next month. Uh, this is the training room that should come online here by MEA. So, this is in front of those two new locker rooms, but this is, for the most part, done. Uh, just need a few pieces of equipment and furniture in there, but it's ready for use. Uh, fieldhouse, uh, the structure's all been painted, and they've started hanging baskets. So, there's something like 32 basketball hoops that need to be armed. And then, all the curtains that subdivide the floors, again, there's six main courts, but those can be subdivided in at two for youth. So, you tend to lay up 12 youth courts, along with some tennis courts on the synthetic and baseball cages that could drop down as well. View from the track, they've been painting the railing as well as they go here. Trying to get all this work done so that they can, uh, start flooring at the end of this month. Uh, this is the upper commons, uh, the old competition gym. Uh, some things are really taking shape. A lot of ductwork is done in this area. I believe ceilings are going to start roughly next week, so the grid will start showing up. Uh, we'll start putting the rest of the drywall up on the walls. Uh, electrical roofing is almost complete.
What is the, um, estimated completion for the...
December.
Conference.
December.
December.
So, there's, um, we're trying to get a little creative because we want to really make a true reveal, but we have run into one issue. Uh, there's new soffits, as you recall, that tie the two spaces together.
Yes.
Because we've got that temporary wall that's obviously in the way, so we're trying to figure out if we can get that done over Christmas break, so that we give you a true reveal. But I think I came up with another way today with the contractor that we can maybe cut just top of the wall off and keep it as much of a true reveal as possible. But, uh, worst case, most of it'll be done. It might just be some detail work on some soft things that's not done right away in this month. Uh, this is a view, sorry. Uh, this is a view from just on the side of the learning stairs. So, you're looking to the south. So, this is the second floor hallway that's in the classrooms is up on the second level there. Uh, the stair that you would typically see there is on the other side of the partition, being used right now. So, that's the curvy stair in the rendering. Um, and then, the incubator hub underneath is, for the most part, framed out, and they will start painting here soon underneath. Uh, the terrazzo has been ground, probably about 75% of the area, uh, which is not the polish. Uh, they'll come back and polish it after all the above-ceiling work is done, and that'll make it look like the rendering, essentially. But for the most part, you can see all the aggregate. It's just not shiny right now. Uh, this is over by the culinary arts room and the coffee shop, uh, looking back between where the temp walls and the commons will meet up with the existing common. Uh, those wood soffits are what I'm referring to and the main fair. We've just got to get a little creative about how we build those, so... And then, this is a view back at the culinary arts area. Uh, this is a front view of the building, uh, where your performing arts and the east wing additions underway. So, the black, uh, area there is the studio stage or black box theater with thrust stage actually behind that. Uh, the word Shakopee are on the fly loft of that space, and then the classrooms continue off to the right there. Uh, all the decking's on over the entrance, too, so that's going to really start taking shape as well. We're trying to come, come up with creative ways to put the entrance glass on sometime around spring break and maybe have that entrance be an entrance again rather than going through the tax boxes. But we'll see, worst case that happens for next year. Uh, and then, this is a view from 17th. So, these are all the classrooms, uh, and a couple stair towers there. That's it.
Can we go back to that front view, one back one?
Yeah.
So, um, there's been a lot of, um, conversation and feedback provided recently with respect to, um, you know, the drop-off points for kids. I know we've got the bus loop that probably ideally we'd have parents wind down the bus loop and drop the kids off so they could walk, uh, down that peninsula. But, you know, having picked up my son on multiple occasions there as well, we appear to have, um, three unmarked lanes that are developing. And, um, I'll be, I'll be honest, I'm equally as worried about the kids as I am about the parents, because kids may not be always paying attention to what's going on, but I can promise that we've got parents that are equally attentive, uh, with those three unmarked lanes. Can we, and maybe we don't need to solve this right here, but I'd be interested for BAC on Wednesday, if we can have some conversation about getting some, either, um, legitimate markings, clear markings, as to where people really should drive and/or walk, or some temporary painted, uh, walkways, something that clearly identifies and alerts everybody, parent and student alike, of where they really need to be or not be, because there's been some deer misses. And, and I, you know, I'm sure other people have gotten it, but I'm getting calls about that, too. And having, being a parent myself that does the drop-off, I know exactly what they're talking about. So, that's something we can look at, unless you've got some ideas now. We can talk more back.
You know, on a side note, I just left a meeting with, uh, the mayor and city administrator and several representatives from the county about traffic safety around the schools. That'd be a great topic for, for us to talk about, too, and the potential of looking at a comprehensive, safer ounce of school plan that all three entities would work on together. So, uh, very excited that we're all on the same page moving forward.
What will they button up for winter?
Um, they'll be working on that front area. Everything where kids are right now will be weather tight, but that will not be complete. The area you're looking at probably won't be completely weather tight through winter. They'll be working on that, so the completion date is August of 2018.
Do you have construction questions?
I'm going to move into the...
Uh, weight equipment is coming. It's being shipped within the next week or two from what I understand, or something like that. Plus, we have a flooring. They ran out of the original flooring, so they put a different flooring down in areas. And that flooring is just clearing customs, we learned. So, we're trying to figure out, do we wait, put the flooring down, the right flooring down, then put the weight equipment, or do we put the weight equipment down, pull it up, put it back down, put a flooring in? So, just working through the logistics there. Should be done within the next month, I would say.
How many are scheduled?
Yes.
So, everything will be completed by next year?
It will be.
All right.
So, I know you asked for a quick, just update where we are with the budget. Um, I don't know how far back or what's your, I guess, budget-wise you want, if you just want a quick snapshot where we're at.
Just a quick snapshot of where we're at right now, and then we can go into more detail, I guess, at BAC, and then our next training session, we can get in the next few minutes if we need to.
So, uh, all the, I guess I want to state that all the projects are under budget right now. Um, they always have been under budget. Um, the $2 million misallocation shortfall, whatever you want to call it, that was discovered. Uh, the goal of this project always that we weren't going to spend the entire bond fund. We're always going to have money left over. So, if anything, that money was in the contingency, and that shorted the contingency a little bit. Uh, through the BAC meetings, we've been working on strategies to kind of, to build that contingency back up, uh, with the biggest one being relooking at how the loading dock was being done and the boilers there. Uh, and in doing that, we came up with a savings of about $845,000, which has allowed us to build the contingency up just short of $1 million. So, uh... so, again, we're under budget and we're working towards not spending all those dollars, but we do have a healthy contingency for what we anticipate for the rest of the project moving forward. Not to say there couldn't be a few surprises, but as you can see, most of the structure's almost done, so we should be hearing a lot of the heavy costs that you see contingency-wise and unforeseen, but the changes you'll see are finishes or tying into existing with finishes, those kinds of things, but we are on budget.
Let's move on up here.
Yes.
Any questions for Chris, budget-wise? Okay, thanks for the update, appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to item seven, old business action items, and at this point, we'll call up Director of Finance and Operations, Lieutenant Johnson, to talk about some long-term facilities maintenance category changes.
So these changes are pretty minor, I actually almost put them on consent, but thought I would put them out there so that we... So originally what I presented and submitted to the state from our July tenth meeting had something that they asked me to change. So down here, we're actually supposed to be projects over a hundred thousand per site, and you can't see it because it's so small, but several of these were actually under the hundred thousand, so all they asked me to do was move them up above. So, these amounts that are listed at seventy-five thousand, all I did was added them into indoor air quality up here, above a hundred thousand, and added them into this number. So I did that on all these lines and, except for the one twenty-five. So the only thing in the board materials that I gave you shows that I have added all those in except for the one twenty-five, they've all been added with the fire and safety and indoor air quality lines above.
So if we see an item up above that's north of a hundred, that's an aggregate of the public projects?
Yeah, of several projects, yep. So in the, all the, what was on the previous one was for indoor air quality, we were doing a school a year at the seventy-five, but the one twenty-five is the high school, so it is all one project, so that's why that stayed down. So if you did math, everything works net to zero, no added cost or changes, just putting them in a different section.
And just to point out, it's very common practice for school districts to make changes in the LTFM funds, and we're going to have to again next year as the age of our buildings adjusts with the newer construction of the high school, so it's gonna hurt us a little bit in the formula, and so we'll have to make some adjustments next year too.
And I think that's kinda why they require you to submit that tenure plan again annually, because I think it's very common for those numbers to be, you know, I mean, the point of that is to when things do come up that are unexpected, that are all part of the age of your buildings, sometimes you gotta put one project in front of another, so it's just kinda the nature of what those funds are for.
Okay, any questions?
So I guess the only thing is, Sarah, this is something where the...
Do we need to take action?
MDE wants a new document, so I feel like we should take action on it to be able to have an answer that says that we have preferred versions to it.
Yep.
I can make the motion to approve this.
I'll say it.
Alright, Matt and Angela, any discussion? All those in, go ahead.
I was just gonna say thank you for the subject.
All of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If we're saying aye, Matt motion carries. Alright, we'll have you change.
Thanks for that.
Alright, Deb Ross, new business discussion items, eight point one, barn to school month.
Yeah, yeah, we had a big to-do last week at Jackson, we had USDA, we had Minnesota Department of Ed, Minnesota Department of Agriculture, Minnesota Department of, one other thing I've got. There's so many.
Department of Department of Health.
Department of Health, yes. We had farmer, been monk farmer, cow, cow, kale. We had Thousand Hills Cattle Company, she was there from there. We have, we do Johnny Pops, which is made by John Connor, and they are graduates of St. Thomas, and they made a healthy snack. It's good, first ingredients you know, so I can serve it. And they came out and we served them lunch and we were in the newspaper, so we made a paper, that's pretty cool to install. And I do have, after I'm done talking, we can go out and have samples of turkey burgers for you guys and hot dogs for you guys, and we do a cranberry mayo, I made it at home, it's okay. And a turkey burger too, my toes are a little, but they're still good. And then I have a Johnny Pop there for you to try, and I got some apples, if you guys in the audience wanna have an apple. The apples are from Jordan, Minnesota's Fonzos, so the turkey burgers are from Cannon Falls, the Thousand Hills, or the hot dogs are from Thousand Hills Cattle, they're grass-fed, nitrate-free hot dogs, and they're from Cannon Falls. Let's see, I do smart chicken, which is chicken, I don't know if you guys have heard of smart chicken or not, but it's the way they process the chicken, it's a more humane, it's not basing chemicals and chlorine to kill it all, it's blast chill. On the elementary menu, we do Diggity Dogs, it's cocktail weenies, but I can't count them that, so call them Diggity Dogs, and that's from Ferndale, and it's close to the elementarys.
I like the name better.
Yeah, I ain't gonna know what else to call them, so.
My next party, Diggity Dogs.
Funny stuff, yeah, you know, make some snappy names. And like I said, we work with the monk farmers, we've done, your kids have had ground cherries at schools, we've brought in a lot of big colored carrots, I got everybody a food processor so they don't have to chop it by hand. Some path is great, she took potatoes and diced them all for breakfast last week, so we threw them through chopper. Yeah, so she, I got some pretty good amazing folks, I like to do a lot of stuff, so it's really exciting.
And Deb doesn't like the ground cherries, but I love them.
Yeah, they're okay.
What is a ground cherry?
It's like a, you can explain it, it's like...
Well, they're in a, it's brown casing, but they come out the size of like a cherry tomato, but they're sweet, and I really love them a lot.
Yeah, they're good, they're good, so next year, when I get them, I'll bring some samples. And I get providing this, this is provided by me, so possibly any of you guys are gonna get some, I just sample it. All of the beef products we do now, the hamburger, the taco meats, the spaghetti sauce, the Italian ducker sauce, we're doing that with one hundred percent beef crumbles that are just nothing else, there's no added, nothing, no spices or anything, and then we're making the sauces ourselves, so that's becoming kinda semi-scratch, so we're trying, we're getting there slowly but surely, and we've had a lot of special diets this year, so it's been kinda hard, a lot of celiac disease, a lot of gluten meals, so the cooks are kinda freaking out this year, so once they sell down, we'll definitely try some new stuff. We did take soups off the salad bars at the secondary schools, I haven't heard anything, I was really surprised, I thought I'd have a big to-do about it, but they were too high in sodium, so until we...
What was soup?
Huh? Soup.
Soup.
Yeah, so we had soup and salad bars, so now it's just a salad bar, mainly a veggie bar, we do put some meat on it and stuff, but it was mainly staff that was eating the soup, so, you know, for the pasta, eventually.
So just out of curiosity, what's the feedback from the kids?
About students, just... About everything in general? Last year, they didn't really like the Thousand Hills hot dogs, they were, they were too tough, so I talked to Thousand Hills, and what it was, it was just the amount of smoke they were putting in the hot dogs. So this year, I did a couple samplings over the summer with the summer feeding kids, and they lessened the smoke in the hot dogs, and they're great. They're a lot softer.
And their kids are...
No, it's really interesting, because my son came home last year and said, I don't like the hot dogs anymore.
Yeah.
But I haven't asked him this yet, I'll ask him.
Yeah, ask him, because I'm like, I'm not getting rid of them. I mean, it's hard to find a good nitrate-free hot dog, you know, and I want, I'm trying to feed these kids healthy, so.
Yeah.
Turkey burgers in, you know, but, but maybe another year, they'll come around.
I think the hot dogs are really good.
They are. Turkey burgers are good too, and with the cranberry mayo, I thought that would be really good, and they don't really like that, but Elise at West put Chipotle in the cranberry mayo, so she makes a Chipotle cranberry mayo, they like that, so. Yeah, they like the homemade sauces, the taco meat and spaghetti sauces, and a little sloppy joes we brought back on. They're kind of iffy on that, I don't like the people who chuck, they don't like sloppy joes. So, yeah, that was, that was a picture or two, so. So, okay, so you guys wanna come and try some samples? I got a happy turkey burger, half a hot dog, and a Johnny Pop, and then we got, bring the apples in your freezer.
You wanna do it now?
Now?
Let's do it. Can we take a quick recess?
Yeah.
Alright, let's recess for...
They didn't bring a whole lot of their sauce.
Ten minutes. Alright, let's reconvene, we're back. Well, let's move on, first of all, before we get started to eight point two, thank you to Deb for the awesome samples, they were fantastic, great food. Let's move on to eight point two, world's best workforce update. David Lewski, come on up, what's your ideas?
Alright. Is this, does this ring a bell?
Yeah.
This exists, okay, okay, good.
It's made mandate, right?
Yes, and so this report is actually not due till December fifteenth, but discussing this with Gary, it was on the district advisory council agenda for last Monday, thought it would be good to kinda let you know where we're at with this and kinda give you an update. And I also wanted to just make a quick connection to the Every Student Succeeds Act, the federal legislation, world's best workforce is Minnesota, ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act is federal, and I know MDE is making some effort to get these two things aligned with each other, so we're not doing two separate things, and I'll just give you something to kinda think about so you can see how they're gonna, how they are kind of connected right now. So this was from last Monday, and I'm not gonna redo the whole meeting, but I just want you to see what's on there. And we did do the world's best workforce and had some input from that parent group as well, and that group was consistent, consists of parents, district staff, and one board member, remember we switched from two to one? You guys fought over it, remember? Okay, the world's best workforce, and to play along, I'm gonna give you a clue, there were five main areas that it addresses, so I'll let you come up with them in your head, and then I won't call on anybody, but I'll let you see what's up there and see if it's the five that you got. Ready? It's not a learning session, so I won't go very long. Alright, there's the five, all children ready for school, third graders reading at grade level, achievement gaps addressed, students ready for career in college, and all students graduate from high school. And when they talk about the gaps, they're talking about racial and ethnic gaps, okay? Alright, so one of the things that we have to do with that is complete this report summary, which we're working on right now, and this is, on this you're gonna see, and I'll give you each a copy of this, and I think I'll have enough copies for people here as well, is a draft of what our goals are, here, I think, I'm giving a couple more, of what our goals will look like, and this is what we worked through with the advisory council, and oh, I forgot, Gary is a part of the advisory council as well, Nancy is part of that too. And what we did is, we took a look at the goal areas, you're welcome, see if they made sense to people, and then gave our, the parents that were there and anybody else who was there a chance to comment on these. And so if you flip to the second page, you're gonna see that is the goal, all children ready for school, and you'll see what we're looking at there is a multi-year goal, that goal is by eighteen nineteen, that we would have some high levels of performance on basic numeracy and literacy skills, and you can see how we're measuring those. The results that you see on there were from last year, for this year, we did, the elementary schools changed, and they used to do intake conferences, and we were collecting the data from there, so in seventeen eighteen, we're actually changing our data source. We talked through with the group whether a multi-year goal made sense, or we should change it to individual and year as well, okay?
And real quick, like if you see on that goal, rhyming was one of the basic literacy skills, you can see our result was poor, forty-two percent, so the committee said, is that really an age-appropriate evaluation to do with the kids? And we pretty much in agreement said, no, rhyming is not a skill that would be expected of a kindergarten student, so this is a living, breathing document, and we can make adjustments to it as we see fit.
And one of the things that was kinda interesting, one of the parent members of that group is a, she works for Scott County Daycare Licensing, or Child Care Licensing, and talked about, there's three, I think she said three hundred and sixty child cares within the Scott County area, that a way that they could get access to some of what our goals are around this, and that that could be information that she disseminates as part of her work, and so that was a connection that was made with Nancy and Allison, I don't know, she's been involved in some other things as well, okay? So we went through this with that group, looking for their input on this. What we'll do in-house here then is finish this report, and it will ultimately be posted on this part of the website, which is under the teaching and learning area, and it's world's best workforce. Each of the school's improvement plans will be out there, as well as some other pieces that you can see up there, okay? Any questions or comments on this? So I'm kinda more talking about the process here, getting a sense of what the goals are, okay? I'm gonna make a quick connection to Every Student Succeeds Act. The state of Minnesota submitted their plan to the federal government just recently, and it has not been approved yet, but this is what it looks like. Their indicator, so if you kinda cross-reference these two, academic achievement at all levels, so they're looking at kinda, if you look at our state testing, its proficiency rates across not just third grade, like they talk about in this one, but it would be three through eight, and then high school, where our MCA tests are. Academic progress, that's a growth measure, is what they're talking about in ESSA, world's best workforce doesn't have a growth measure in it. Graduation rate, there's a one-for-one match on those. Progress toward English language proficiency, that did not use, this replaces No Child Left Behind. This, the EL test, the access testing, was not part of No Child Left Behind, so this is a significant change that now, for accountability purposes, the access test gets rolled into that, okay? And then finally, other school, you heard a lot of talk, you guys probably did because you paid attention to this, but a lot of talk that we wanted to change our accountability system to be broader than just high-stakes testing. This fifth measure was their attempt at getting at this, this other school quality measures. And the challenge with that is, it has to be the same measure for all school districts across the state, finding something that they all have in common, and so what they're looking at is things like school climate, we don't have a common climate measure within schools, so they couldn't use that initially. They look at access to advanced courses, they weren't sure how to deal with AP versus CIS versus, what's the IB, and so they're working on a system to look at something more broadly, but right now, the other school quality measure is consistent attendance, kinda the opposite of chronic absenteeism, and so those are the pieces that are in there, okay? And so you kinda almost can do that crosswalk for yourself with world's best workforce state, ESSA federal. Here's how the accountability system is gonna work, and this is, if you also remember, they said it was gonna get simpler, ESSA, and I can come back and do more on this in a learning session if you want, but I'm just gonna tell you real quick, and I just feel like I wanna be pointing at this while I'm doing it. You start with all year title schools, and what they do is, it's almost, it's like a bracket almost, if you wanna think about this, they'll take three measures, math proficiency or achievement, they're calling it, reading proficiency or achievement, and progress toward English language proficiency if you're an EL student. If you are in the bottom quarter of any of those three measures, your school moves to the next step. So you, in the bracket, you could say you kinda lost, you go, you go forward to see if you're still a school that's gonna get one of these labels for additional support. Then they look at growth. Of those schools that were, that moved forward, how many of them are in the lowest quarter of either reading growth or math growth? Then they go one more time to that fifth other school quality measure, in this case, consistent attendance, they look for who's the lowest in attendance of those remaining schools, and those are the ones that get targeted for state support, okay? For high school, it's just a little different, and I won't step you through the whole thing again, but you know, elementary and middle don't have a graduation rate, so it's not part of that. If you looked at this one, you'll see two A and two B are now graduation rates, and one other change under ESSA, and it's an acknowledgement of the fact that students that are in, what is it, transition program, is that what we call them, transition program?
Correct.
Right, that they stay with us till age twenty-one, which is three years beyond graduation, and I think that's what most kids in that situation would then... And I think that's when most kids in that situation would then earn their diploma. That this was a change. So we'll look at four-year rate and seven-year rate. Okay? I'm going to give you this document as well. If you want to help. Okay. That's all I wanted to share, is World's Best Workforce, it's on the horizon, it's coming. We'll have that done by December 15th. We did get input from that parent group. And then just, ESSA is going to be more and more on our radar once the state of Minnesota plan gets accepted. And so wanted you to have that background as well. Yep?
Under NCLB, there were consequences, punitive consequences.
Correct.
Under ESSA and/or the Minnesota version that we're seeking approval, are there consequence? It's nicely put, schools identified for support. That sounds to be pleasant. But are there, between you and I, are there consequences?
I was actually, this was the first time I was ever on an MDE committee. I was on the technical committee for some of that. And I was, there were, I might have been the only principal or former principal on that group. And sometimes for No Child Left Behind, it wasn't the consequence that hurt as much as being labeled failing. And so there isn't that same school busing, providing after-school tutoring, school choice, removal of the principal, all that that was part of No Child Left Behind originally, is not in here. But what is still in here is, and I think MDE has done a nice job of this, is really trying to make it a more supportive model, that there, there's still labels, you're intent comprehensive support, or that's one of the levels of support. They have different levels of support that they're still titling, that schools will qualify for, if you want to put it that way in these terms. It's still not going to feel very good if you wind up down there. The short answer to your question is, no, there are not those same kind of consequences. There is still being categorized or labeled as one of these schools that gets.
So you would want to be, theoretically, you could stay in the category over and over and over if you don't make progress?
Correct. And there's a, there's a mechanism for also leaving comprehensive, or I wish I could remember the other name of the support categories. I can bring that another time. But there are mechanisms for how well you perform that can move you out of that. Yes?
And there are flaws in the plan, to be honest, like any other plan. To me, the most glaring one is the growth measure piece, because the MCAs are not normed or written as a growth test. They're not like, ended up WEA and yet, Minnesota's planning to use the MCAs as their growth measure, which is not a growth measure test. So other states have switched to straight-up growth measure tests. And so those things are going to have to be discussed, debated. They have meetings. We, you know, show up to some of those regionally and share our opinions. And sometimes we get some progress, sometimes we get a head scratch. And when I brought up that exact question to the commissioner at a meeting in Bernsfield, she danced quite beautifully around the question because she knew it's not a growth measure test.
I will say this, and working on that committee, I often felt like MDE in the past was doing things to us, didn't feel very good about that. But I look at MDE, and they kind of are like us with federal.
Yeah.
They, they are really just trying to implement federal law, is what I gathered from this, and worked with some really good people there as well.
Yep, they are. And but sometimes it's a square peg in a round hole.
Yeah. Yes, they're trying to find the best way to do it. This growth measure on a non-vertically scaled test is what is a tricky one.
Yeah.
So this, ESSA indicator five for 2020 and 2021, this well-rounded education. Who, who decides what constitutes a well-rounded education?
School districts do.
But it's got to be consistent between every district.
Not really. There are.
It doesn't have to be. That will be for this.
Yeah, that, I thought.
This one has to be the same.
It deals with programming and offerings and that, yeah.
But to your, that came up a lot. And the reason we wound up at attendance, because that was the only one where there was a consistent measure that everybody's using right now. And so a, this group will decide that, or there will, sorry, not this group per se. They, they'll call for people that are interested in serving on an MDE committee around developing what other school quality measures would be. And they'll roll something out, and then it might go to a larger advisory group. And then they go around the state and they say, we're looking for input on this. And you guys probably, I know you get a ton of stuff, but you might have got something related to ESSA through MSBA repeatedly, that the state plan's out there, but what's on it and all that. So somebody has to put an initial, throw the initial dart, and then it's open for input.
Yep. But we've heard they'll lay out parameters, and districts will say, here's what fits within those parameters of a well-rounded education for us.
All right.
But I'll, when they start looking, sounds like they're passionate about well-rounded.
Do you see passion places than I don't?
Yes. All right. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Gary's up for evening three, you roll the company.
Yeah. And this will be really quick, it won't take 10 minutes that are, that are on the agenda. But you've been presented with our actual, what we call in the school business, October counts, which are really important to school districts, because funding is based on those October counts. I think it's important to look at the last column on the right. So you've got the orange, the blue, and the gray, the district total, K-12, the actuals from 2016, in the orange, the projected numbers, in the blue, and then our actuals this year in the gray. And so you can see where, you know, we do have more students than we had last year, but we are under what was projected by a total of 18 students. So then what a superintendent does is start breaking down those numbers and looking, what grade were we off? And what are our procedures for looking at projections? And you can see there's a couple of grade levels where, you know, we're, we're pretty far off on some of our projections. And so I prefer to use what's called a roll-up method, where we're looking at last year's numbers of second graders and saying, okay, it makes sense then, then we'll have a similar number of third graders the next year. And do it in a conservative way, because it's always better from a finance standpoint to come in over projections than under projections. And so being under even by the 18 kids is not a good thing. So we want to make sure we're somewhat conservative with our projections in the future. So wanted to make that point and see if anybody have it, has any questions about it? There are certain trends. Here's another really important point about projections, that this year, I'll be going into detail to see where are we losing kids? Where are we gaining kids? Are there districts that we're losing students to? What grades are those kids in the districts? Are we losing some in early childhood that we're not getting back in kindergarten? Like we talked about Amanasori, you know, if Amanasori starts taking some of our kindergarteners, that's a big deal. We're losing those pupil units. Are we losing them to private schools, to other offerings, online schools? So really going to analyze those numbers and look at what's called a capture rate this year, because it's vitally important from a budgetary standpoint and from a serving kid standpoint, that we have as accurate projections as we can. And these aren't from a percentage standpoint, they're not wildly off. I mean, they're pretty darn accurate, but it's, it's super important to be as accurate as we can.
So the Takata seniors?
Mm-hmm.
That was, that's like off by more than 50%.
Yeah. So those count, some of those are counted in the high school numbers. So that's why, you know, they're, they're kind of partial students. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah. A year ago at this time, because we started two weeks early, Takata had a 12th grade program up and running. And now, we started when we started this year, that program is actually starting now. So that's why the numbers look a little bit lower. A year ago, that program was up and running, and now they're getting it started just now. So.
So we have head count, it's not reflecting.
Correct. But not, it, it didn't, it's going to be captured, I think, within the next week or so.
Yeah.
But it wasn't here October 1st.
And we'll still get the funding as we capture.
Right.
So that'll, that'll.
We're going to capture them shortly.
Push those projections pretty, you know, close.
Right.
Other questions?
On the more that we base our budget on?
Ah, it's based on projections, the projected number.
Projected?
The blue number, there are gray and.
81, 81.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? So based on Sarah's, when can we hear from you, the district, the updated number?
My plan is to give you updated enrollment numbers every couple months, just so that we keep you in the loop, so that we can follow trends too, to see if we're going up or if we're losing kids.
Well, if we're going to get the funding for them, I'm assuming you're going to have to turn that in soon.
Correct.
So perhaps either the next meeting, he might have something for us to say, look, this is how many.
Yeah.
We found in this area that puts us at 81, 201.
And we can sure present that next month.
Not that you need to, I just, it's always be good to have that.
Yep. Yep. And yeah, my plan was every other month to present you with, with enrollment projections just as FYI.
The previous screen, the kindergarten projection versus actual.
32 higher or 42 higher.
Yeah.
Yeah. Couple sections.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, that's awesome. And we, so that's really good to know. And that's something we need to look at too, see if there's strategies that we can have to see which kids are coming to us so we can tighten up that projection a little bit. Oh, we're happy to be over in that one, that was a sage word for us. And remember, pupil units count differently.
Yes.
At different levels. So that's really important.
Yep, it is really important. Yep.
It's going to be back over 600 for the first time in four years. Looks like the recession babies are.
Well, and how would, hmm, you're welcome. So I did a super quick calculation when the, when the attendance area projections for the new developments were up on the screen, it came to something like, at the end of the day, 450 projected new kids. Do we have a timeline, Dave, of, I mean, I know that when the development, just because, how do you project that in to next year's numbers when some of those developments will be 100% complete, some of them will be 40% complete?
I can tell you what we did. We pretend, and we talked about that one column, and I, oh, I was careful to say each time, when it's fully built up.
Yeah, when it's fully built up.
But I, I don't have any guess as to what it's going to be in the interim.
I'm just saying, in the last three or four years, we haven't had a lot of development in the community, so we haven't had to factor in that variable when we do our projections, whereas now we have to.
Well, you could, you could make an educated guess, I assume, by finding out what their start date, projected completion date, occupancy date.
Right. I'm just saying, as we do projections.
Yeah. And that's kind of what we were looking at.
Yeah.
From their information. But we also know that sometimes a project will get delayed.
Yeah.
And, but that's what we were looking at.
Or they don't all get sold.
Yeah. Yeah. Just because they're completed doesn't mean they're all.
And just to be real clear on that, those numbers on there, that's projected based on what we're getting from similar type units right now. That, that's a, that's the best we have.
Right.
But it's going to be that way again.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else for Gary, roll them? Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on to item nine, new business action items. And our director of inspection, Alex Bryan, come on up. Let's talk about obsolete equipment.
Okay. So normally, this is a very mundane action item, because we're just saying, hey, we have some equipment we're getting rid of according to policy. If it reaches a certain value, which in this case is within the range of 25 to 100 grand, we have to have a board motion. Anything above 25, it's good to have a board motion saying, hey, you're selling this off, we're acknowledging that you're doing that. And then either it's something that we put out for bid through posting in the paper, or we get competitive prices through a couple of different vendors. Part of the reason I'm kind of bringing this up is because this is sort of the very first wave, the tip of the iceberg of older tech that we will be selling off as a result of our really huge ramp up of technology in the schools over the last few years. So we finally gotten these iPads from that sixth-grade pilot a few years ago. They went through eighth or, or ninth grade now, but we got the iPads back. And we're not going to redeploy them, not the majority of them, because they've been in a one-to-one setting for three years, they're burnt. They made it through that, they're good. There's nothing else we can do with them that's going to make sense. So the best thing for the district to do is sell off. The other reason to kind of talk about it is, just to be clear sort of publicly in terms of what the policy is, that's kind of mandated by the state and by statute in terms of what options we have to actually sell off devices, especially this quantity. You're not going to auction off 600 iPads. You're not going to get on eBay and say, hey, they're on this one, they're on this one. You're not going to individually sell them, a block that large, the best return for the district is to sell them off in one large block. You know, get pricing that way, get rid of them all at once, because not, not only do you get rid of the really good ones, but you get rid of the really lousy ones that have a cracked screen or something like that, that otherwise you're not going to get any people. So there's certain incentives in terms of the volume, and certain limitations in terms of the statute where we can't just give them to the kids. We could maybe give them to another school district, but they don't want our junk. Not that it's junk, but most districts aren't going to hate it. So looking at what's the best value for the district, this is what we would need to do. Next step would be just go out, we kind of have an estimate, that's how we get to this point, of what the value is. We'll get our competitive bids, and we'll sell it out. We'll be in this place again very soon with MacBooks, with next year's batch of iPads, with kindergarten pilot iPads, which are already at an age where they won't take the latest software for iOS, like the operating system for, for that. We're getting four years out of those, we kind of scratched them a little bit. So because it's a recurring theme, just kind of wanted to bring it up, see if there are any questions on this kind of issue.
I have a side question.
Okay.
Cases are like industrial, military, or, like it, are they worth anything? Do you sell them with the cases or are they cases?
We just recycle them, some of them, basically, shreds and repurpose them. By the time, if you look at some of those cases after three years, they are scummy as all get out, or scratched up.
How much?
Yeah.
Nobody, let's bring up another question, John, that Brian and I are talking about, the cabinet's been talking about. And that's low, the potential sale of lower value items to bring revenue in. We have, for instance, some old gym floor that may be of interest to people. We had some in my previous district, and woodworkers snapped it up in a heartbeat. So we feel like we need to come up with a process for those lower value pieces where people can make bids, we can post them online on our website, say, here's our trading post or whatever we want to call it, so that we can, rather than throwing some things out that might have a value to people, although a scummy iPad case is probably something that we would need to throw out. But if there are other items, that we would have a process that follows state statute.
More of that one-off type thing.
You know, for instance, that is obsolete to us, but somebody else may find some value in it.
Definitely.
But that's not included in this motion. We'll bring up some language for the policy to address that.
So Brian, are you seeking action tonight that we authorize this particular sale? Or are we, I'm not opposed to coming back and doing this again a year, but it seems like if we establish a process and/or a policy in compliance with their policy, a process in compliance with their policy, it's like great time to move through the next batch of electronics.
Generally speaking, this could probably go on a regular consent agenda. If it's within a certain threshold, that's good to have it on branch under regardless.
Anything over 1,000 dollars to be.
Well, anything over the minimum bid where you have to require a bid. So this one happens, anything at 25,000.
25 to 100 is sort of this window of, you can either do, you know, closed bids.
Right.
Or competitive. Or competitive, direct negotiation with more, multiple vendors.
But either way, this, this policy suggests we need to authorize, however Brian goes about doing this, at 25,000, we have to authorize going in period.
What I'm asking is, if we authorize this tonight, are we going to be authorizing it year after year after year?
Anytime, anytime I have a lot.
Yes.
Of grouping that reaches the threshold, yes.
But you're saying.
But it could be in consent, we wanted to put it here under new business, because we knew there'd be this exact conversation tonight.
Yeah, no, I don't have any problem with that, or where it goes, I'm, I'm asking if it's in compliance with policy. And I don't care that we talk about it every year, it just seems like it's almost redundant to break the same thing up if it's in compliance with their policy, unless statute requires that we have to take definitive action each time.
Yeah.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying. Okay, I actually like the idea that we see it, because it's just a trigger for us, you know, each, even if it's once a year's ago, oh, nice, all right, so we got some money back on those devices or that particular item, so I like knowing about it.
And we can put it, like you said, neither's fine, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, normally, they consent, it was.
It would be, but we knew we'd talk about it.
Like the iceberg for this thing.
So we need to entertain a motion to authorize you to move forward.
Yes.
Okay. Second, second to that, any other discussion?
I'd like to know what the outcome is.
Yeah, for sure.
What's done now.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What's in the sign? Vote for Kerry's. Good luck.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, number 10, other. Fantastic, other. So, Gary, other, we will not do committee reports just yet, we'll do anything other than a committee report. I'm going to go around the horn, we'll see if anybody's got any. Keith? You have your hand up.
Yeah, just if you have a high school student, you know, wrote it tomorrow, is their college and career readiness day, and practice ACT for our juniors paper pencil, just like they'll do in the spring. Our sophomores can do an online version of that and learn how to use our ACT test prep as part of family connection and audits. And so that's a pretty big day in the high school tomorrow.
Keith?
I have something, sorry. I would just add that the second attendance areas public listing and input session is October 23rd, mark your calendars. And also tomorrow, at the high school, is financial aid night, so it's an informative session for parents and students to get all the information they can regarding financial aid, what sort of financial aid is available, the process, that sort of thing. And it's still a ways away, but the second early release date is November 29th. Mark your calendars.
Think the first one went well?
Communication went very well. There's a whole.
I'd like to piggyback on that, I'd like to give a shout out, actually, to the high school, because there has been a significant improvement in communication this year that I've seen, and I'm really impressed with how well they're keeping us informed of everything that's happening, including the things that Dave just talked about, and Ashley. It's been great to sell, nice job, high school.
I'd like to add another shout out. My stepdaughter goes to, is a kindergartner at Jackson, and my wife's parents were raving about the grandparents' day, it was on Friday. They've been fortunate enough to go for six years, they've got kids of two other districts, or grandkids of two other districts, and they talk about how Shockley's the most inclusive, and how Mr. Flack does a great job, the whole staff. So they were raving about how much they love coming down for that every year.
Nice. All right, anything else? Sarah, you got any?
No, I don't.
All right, so do some committee reports, committee updates. David?
Yeah, I do, well, only finance as well as one that's not listed, so I do whether to do it other here, and that's the Academy Stating Committee. We've been meeting, Gary and I represent the board of the district on that, of course, Sarah's on it as well. We've been meeting regularly, we presume that on a regular basis. I don't have a whole lot to present, other than the conversations continue around identifying and working to identify and select our academy champions. We've been working most lately on other partnering, partnering opportunities. Money in a jar.
Bit of jar.
Other partnering opportunities that, that local businesses and those who wish to do so can partner with us on. And various things under there, think all about the mechanics and, and implementation steps of the academy. So, it's working with those local business leaders who have signed up to the council and are providing great advice and counseling support to us. So, we happen to have another meeting when.
When, Tim?
We typically meet once a month, we've actually had a couple more frequently, just because there's enough. So, that's just ongoing, wasn't listed, so I want to bring that up. In terms of the finance committee, so we actually had that in advance of our last learning session, I really don't know, Suzanne, I just stepped out. I don't know that there's a whole lot to update, because we covered it all in that meeting, relative to the budget standing for '16, '17, and then looking ahead in '17, '18, we have the audit coming up. So I really don't have an update beyond what we already covered in that meeting, and since that was listed, I thought I'd at least address that.
I can only add that the audit is pointing down, and you've already got a date on the calendar for next month, we're not going to be reporting on the plan until the 20th, no, 20?
We have a, we added a finance committee meeting on the 20th for that purpose, and then I think we made the audit, we moved it up, and that was the discussion, the call, and that's been moved to the 27th, so the last meeting in November is actually the audit report as opposed to December, where we typically.
Okay, thanks.
I was going to say, CFAC on, on top of the, while we're talking about finance, we did have a Citizens Financial Advisory Council meeting on September 12th, but that was a part of, a couple of big topics that we talked about was our P-card manual, and then our P-card audit of some of the past spending. We have moved forward, Suzanne, where's Suzanne? Cliff in Marston Allen has, has a searching software that they're going to use, and they're going to extract a sampling size, and then if they find anything, they'll dig deeper. But we've got them booked to come out, I think, if they haven't already, in the next few weeks. So we'll have results there to discuss at some point in time soon. And then the other thing we, we covered in depth was that Chris talked about over the $2 million from the high school construction fund. But otherwise, it was a good meeting, the CFAC participants are continually engaged and ask great questions, and are anxious to give in to more and more meeting topics. So thank them for their participation.
Great, great. Personnel?
Uh, yeah, personnel. We had a meeting on September 11th, and at that point, we talked about our new staffing model that we're using, and that will help us to be more accurate in the future. Staffing, we also talked about how to staff, or how to, the process when we have hotspots, like we did earlier this year, and had to add a couple of sections, because our enrollment numbers were a little bit higher, and we'll talk about that process. We also had one tonight, can I talk about that, or should I wait? Either way. And that one was essentially, because the personnel committee in the past hasn't been run, it's been more of a negotiations committee and not a oversight type committee, we've decided that tonight we would sit down and lay out a plan, and we'd be more planful about when we're meeting, why, what the topics might be, and how we can best serve and utilize everybody's time. So, we had some great discussion on what topics we'll be diving a little more deeper into in the future, so.
All right. BACH on here, but Chris was here earlier, so he kind of gave a real high-level BACH update, I think. Things are clicking along. Budget-wise, you did a great job of, you have funded off savings, things that make really good sense that aren't just cuts, but are actually really smart decisions, so we're meeting again on Wednesday. Any other committee-related items?
Ashley over here.
Ashley over here.
Yes, so we had the first meeting for the Citizens Communications Advisory Committee. That meeting was last Tuesday, very good first meeting. I believe, we actually have one of our members in the audience, Jenny Ames, for Community Education. For the first meeting, we had introductions for the first meeting, and also we performed a SWOT of the district, and we analyzed the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats from the community's perspective. Some of the strengths that came out of that were the new leadership that we have with Gary, and also just the decades of service that a lot of our employees, teachers, bring to the district. Some opportunities that they determined were with the academies, and also another opportunity was just telling the stories inside of the classroom, so that people can see what exactly our teachers are doing, kind of the faces of Shockley's schools, so that's a good idea. But it's just been, it was great getting the perspective of community members who are parents, getting that side of the lens. Sorry, I'm rambling. But we've had a communications committee, I believe in some form or core fashion, since 2014, but just based on the first meeting, I think that we have the makings of a committee that can withstand the test of time, so off to a great start. And the next meeting is in November.
Okay, great. Any other committee reports? All right, in that case, we're on November 12th, recognition of visitors. Hi, visitors, I recognize you. Okay. Coming meetings on important dates, I'm not going to raise these for you, because you're all good, intelligent folks. October 11th, like I said, is BACH, 23rd of October, my next committee meeting, in our attendance, public meeting, input session, it's very important for you to put that on the calendar. All right, if there's nothing else, I would like to adjourn the motion for June.
I would make that motion.
On Antonio, any discussion on that, John? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, we say aye, you are.